I'm starting recording you guys, so anytime you want to start.
Rachel, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so we're gonna call the meeting to order 1.1 is roll call.
Mark Carlton.
Bonnie Freeman.
Aaron Murphy.
Katie Nessel. 1.2 pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. 1.3 agenda review and approval, Dr. Long is our agenda.
I have nothing to add or amend, other board members have an opportunity at this time.
So I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second by motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2.0 consent agenda, 2.1 correction approval of the regular meeting minutes for February 13th, 2023.
I have no corrections.
I didn't. Motion to approve the minutes for February 13th, 2023. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
3.0 communication reports presentations, 3.1 the Falls Charter School Natural Resource Center, Mr. DeCarlo.
Evening, so I shared with you, should be document on each of your stacks about the report and I'm gonna go through it verbally. Any questions, feel free to ask. So first thing I wanted to start out with, so Dr. Long authorized me to be making a $5,000 purchase for construction tools to be used for CTE program for technical ed, so I approached Home Depot and they ended up donating about $1,500 additional to that 5,000, so. Mr. Kerrigan, who's been doing wood shop myself, were able to pick out a number of different tools. One of the big things that we looked at is getting tools that were durable so that we could use them for a number of years. That would have been cheaper to guide to buy some other tools, but this way we will have ones that last us quite a while. And so I've listed out all the different things, so we'll have fully stocked nail bags, so hammers, torpedo level squares, screwdrivers, tape measures, utility knives, adjustable wrenches. In addition, we'll have some flat bars, sledgehammers, nail sets, socket sets, T squares, large levels. Not just that nail punches, not nail bunches. Chisels, hand saws, and cordless tools, including drills, circular saws, oscillating tools, reciprocating saws, brenders, and jigsaws. And so these will be used both in the woodshop space as well as down at the NRC, both on projects that we're working on down at the NRC as well as CTE projects that we'll be doing down there. So all of them, we've gotten some of them already and they will all be delivered by Spring Brick. So one of the things that we are gonna work on down there is I actually have a couple of students who are gonna help to make sure we have an inventory of everything and a list of everything, and then they check out procedures, so if Mr. Mathis or myself or Mr. Kerrigan is choosing, then we know where they're at at all times. So any questions I can answer about that first thing?
If I recall correctly, before students use power tools, there's some safety training and a test they have to pass.
Yes, that is correct.
That's awesome.
Yeah, no, I was definitely excited to be moving forward with that.
Those are grant funds too, so it's not general fund dollars, we targeted that in a grant.
That's really cool.
Yeah, and the kids are excited to be able to do some more things. So then the second piece, and actually all three of the next all kind of tied together, so during spring break, there is going to be a middle school day camp going on out at the NRC, so Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And one of the things that's really exciting for me is that all five of us core teachers from the high school have all agreed to be there. And what was really exciting is that everyone agreed to be there before I even had to mention that we'd actually get paid to be there. And so that tells me that people are really excited to be able to do this. And then additionally, Ms. Ely, the sixth grade teacher, has stepped up and agreed to be there as well as one of her former colleagues who's gonna be coming up and doing some woodworking with students, and so the activities are gonna be kind of based on outdoor themes, but not necessarily curriculum. And so I've got a list there of what we're gonna be doing. No, excuse me, I don't have a list of the different things, but there's a whole variety of different activities students can sign up for in advance to do like I say, learning sessions in the morning. And then in the afternoon, there's gonna be some time to do some service work around the NRC, so we're working on a garden fence. And we're working on putting down some woodchips on trails. And then we're also gonna be taking a field trip with the students one of the days somewhere close by based on what they vote on, so it's looking like right now, I'm excited because Whiskey Springs is in the lead, which is also where I did my Eagle Scout project, so I'm hoping that can stay in the lead, but we'll see.
Like you planned a visit, is it Whiskey Springs?
Yeah.
Nice.
So something either there or up at four bit four, or I forget what the other option that we came up with is. And so this is being paid with the Gray Family Foundation grant that we received last year in large part. So I will jump ahead actually to summer camp and then come back to the Earth Day, so the reason that we are doing this is to kind of get a test feel and a feel for how we can run different spring break camps or summer camps, and so this summer, we're hoping to have another couple of weekday camp, and this again would be open to middle school students and also then we're hoping to do one for younger students for just, it would be smaller portions of the day, they wouldn't be up there all day. But our idea is that spring break can be our opportunity to test out kind of how we pour things and the logistics because going forward, one of the pieces that I'd really like to see is having some camps up there during the summer. And part of the rationale too is then being able to publicize what we're doing and that might draw some enrollment in in terms of people coming up because the summer camp will not just be open to be fall students, but it's gonna be open to anyone in the region that can come up. And so that's one of the things that like I say, we're working on, I have been given a pretty good impression that we should be able to get the grant to be able to pay for, and there's always a chance we won't, but from what the Gray family has said, that we are very likely to be able to get that, and as part of that, doing some publicity and some advertising around that, and so like I say, I'm excited for it, it's something that we can also have some of our high school students working with and helping, and it'll also, there'll still be us adults working on it. So any questions about either of those before I talk about Earth Day?
Do you have a timeframe for that, Ben?
Not yet. Right now, I, I will as soon as spring break is done.
Sounds awesome.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. So then the last thing on there is talking about Earth Day, so the second annual Earth Day celebration at the NRC is gonna take place. And Dr. Wong and I are working on shoring up dates. He was afraid, make sure that's a date that works for everyone right now. We're looking at doing it the Wednesday before conferences, so that'd be April 17th or April 19th, excuse me. And so then that way we would be able to have something the day before conferences for students to be doing, because there'll be K-12. And then continue to have little exhibits set up that parents can come down to conferences so that they can get down to the NRC. And right now I'm tentatively planning also for my high school conferences to be at the NRC, so any of the parents who wanna talk to me would be able to come down and see me at the NRC and see some of what's going on, so. The basic overview of it, it'll be very similar to how last year was, except for it'll be all grades. So instead of last year where I had middle schoolers teaching younger elementary students, it'll be high schoolers teaching younger elementary students, and then the middle schoolers will still get, they'll kind of be in a hybrid where they get to do some lessons themselves, but they'll also then get the opportunity of teaching and working with some of the younger grades, because I know especially some of our seventh graders are missing out on that after having gotten that last year, that this year, just for a variety of reasons, it hasn't happened. So that's coming up, and like I said, I will have more information at our next meeting about that, but just to kind of be thinking ahead, so. Any questions on that, or anything else related to the Natural Resource Center?
It's really exciting information, thank you, Mr. DeCarlo.
I have one, one comment I'll throw out.
Sure.
I've, I've mentioned it in the past. I always thought that that facility down there might be a good place to host a hunter education program, and I don't know. I don't know if it would even fit into the curriculum and time and all that, but I just.
That's a possibility, really.
Oh, that'd be a good location for something. One of the some of the benefits, a lot, a lot of people are aware, but there's a lot of ethics and responsibility that's taught in that program. Gun safety is another one that's taught, which I think go a long way even if you're not a hunter. And then survival is taught and first aid and stuff like that, so. And I know the Arthur Doobes Foundation is a big proponent kind of in that world, so there's potentially some funding available, so.
Arthur.
Arthur Doobes. And I've, I've heard a lot of, just talking to parents and stuff, a lot of people thought that would be good reason to send their kids up here to, and it's, it's really valuable for the kids under 12, because you can't, you can't buy a hunting license unless you have that, and 12 is when you can start hunting, so. Of course, it could add value to anybody at any age, but, but that would be kind of a targeted age group under 12, so.
Nice, when I think of something, the more we can have other groups up there, now that we're past the pandemic, that's something that, one of the things I'm, can be kind of working on is a system and a process for that, as far as the groups wanna come up and use it. So I know I've been approached by a couple of different groups that like to at different points, so making sure that we can cover what we need to, and then also I think it'd be great to have some other options that aren't just us doing everything up.
Sure.
Bill, we just went through this with our other school. So two things. One, you wanna make sure that you check your board's policy in regards to what's worded for firearms. And the other is, is that you wanna make sure that you reach out to protectors because there is some liability around that, and that ended up being a no-go for the other school, but just make sure you check those two factors before giving the go-ahead with a class like that.
Yeah, I, I think the benefit we have is that's not a regular school site. And we certainly would, I certainly would go past protectors, which is our connection to PACE too, but having done that as an under 12-year-old myself, but when I used to be that age a long time ago, you know, it's, it's not just if you're gonna handle a gun, it's just being aware of guns. Yeah, for some kids, they don't have an exposure to what the, it's serious business, and, and it really before I could go hunting, I had to do that, and I realized, wow, you're carrying something significant around.
Sure.
But also when, if there are guns in the home or whatever, it just raises that level awareness, so I think we will try to figure out a way to make sure something like that can happen in our community up there.
I always thought just having the curriculum, if, if every kid came out of school with that curriculum, whether they use it or not, there's, there's just so much I guess, exposure like you mentioned, that they might not get, you know, if their family is not involved in, in hunting, that they could still get some of the, the values that come out of it, so I always thought just the curriculum itself would be good, but I know we're limited on how much time we have for curriculum.
And there might be other ways to do it, and when we have day camps or things like that, there may be some class that people could sign up and maybe for a small fee. Sure. Because I think there's a fee related to the actual hunter safety certificate.
There is a fee, my daughter is doing her Sunday, and I had to pay I think 25 for the field day, so it's not a huge fee, but it's still. Yeah. And that's her kid, and the class is full with who knows how many kids, so you know, possibility of bringing a little more money into the NRC too. If the field day was approved, yeah, I agree, good, good point.
I appreciate it, Mark.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
That also applies to archery, that, that.
Mm-hmm, absolutely does.
Anything else I can answer? Thank you. Yep, that's great.
So 3.2 superintendent report, updates, Dr. Wong.
Well, first of all, I'm gonna start with enrollment, and we're up over last year, but we're down a couple of students, we had a family move out of the, out of our district in January, and the, which I hate to see people go, the good news is that we worked hard to get their kids connected with their next school, so that's always a difficult transition for families. I have a few other items here, I, I think the one that weighed heavier this last month was the weather. And while we don't have a lot of control over that, what we do have some control over is how we respond. And we mostly responded well, I think we all got a little surprised near the end of February when a, an ice storm appeared out of nowhere, wasn't a lot of snow, but it was really slick out there. And I usually when, when we have a, a late start or a, you know, school starting, when I drive in, you know, 62, I, I don't really start hitting serious stuff until I get about halfway up, sometimes rocky top. It was a fog cloud, ice cloud in Central Point, Eagle Point, and then I just dreaded what's gonna happen, I'm very grateful, I'm, our staff heeded the guidance to take your time, and if you're a little late, we'd rather have you be a little late in a one piece than, than not make. And we have, no one had any issues with that other than, it's kind of for people who haven't driven in, in ice, snow and ice, that's, that's a little scary, but the net effect of the various atmospheric rivers that touched our environment is that we had three snow days, and we've already made up one, because we made up one right away as soon as we had one. We have one scheduled for June 1st, and then I'll be checking instructional minutes and all that, if we have to make the third one, it would be what normally would have been the last day of school, but we'll make that call later on in, in the next month or so, probably after spring break for sure. I just wanted to reiterate, we also had planned in January, and then we bumped to February, or I guess we had an early February, month of late February, a listening session. And we have rescheduled that, that's an opportunity for the community to come and talk with the administration and any school board members, we'll, we'll post it as a school board meeting in case we have a quorum. But really, it's kind of, I don't wanna say it's open mic, because it sounds like we're telling jokes and stuff, but it will be an opportunity for people to kind of make comments, raise questions. I don't know that we're gonna get into a lot of back and forth stuff, but I know a year ago we did this, we learned a lot of things from that, and was really grateful that people were willing to turn out. And I think having been cooped up because of the pandemic and impacts of that, that helped get people there, but for board members, I encourage you, that would be next Monday, would be the same time as our regular board meeting, but we'll be at the elementary cafeteria. And we'll take notes and listen and see what else that might inform our planning and, and budgeting going forward. I'm anticipating over spring break that we'll get another 50 yards of playground soft fall, so Mrs. Frey, that means that we'll have another nine to 10 inches down by the play structure down there, which bring that up to a lot safer level. Once that gets delivered, we've reached out to a local company to help spread that around a little, and then we've arranged for another 50 yards of kind of it's a ton, I wanna say topsoil, it's a mix, organic mix that we're gonna cover all the areas where there was construction that had beat off the, the, the very various vegetation and got really muddy, we're gonna top dress it with that, and then we're trying to schedule to have it higher seeded towards the end of spring break, and we'll thin it off, because we need to get grass from backline of all the construction, we just have too much mud. Do some other cleanup on that in anticipation of coming back first week in April, so I just wanted you to be aware that, that shouldn't spit things up a little bit more around there. You probably, I'm sure you all, I, I forwarded an email, you got a copy of the newsletter, and I'm not gonna reiterate everything in there, but I do just wanna say that in that newsletter, that is an opportunity for our community, here's a copy right there, for our community to get an update, usually it's an update on the previous month, and then also highlighting some things that are upcoming. And I know one of those things is we have two school board positions that are open, and we're having people expressing interest in filing, I think the deadline for that is actually Wednesday, the 15th, if I remember correctly. Yes, we.
Yes, we do.
She has to read.
Yeah.
I'm officially on the ballot.
Okay, so, so I just put that out there because should, should we not have enough candidates so we have an open position? Then it would fall on the board in July or August to seek someone to, to appoint someone to the board, ideally, so we have a five in report. Because if you have four members, you still have technically need three votes to pass things, because you need a majority, right, so five for four. Yeah. And then I guess the last thing that I wanted to point out generally is that spring break is coming in two weeks, and I'm hoping spring comes with it, it felt like it this Sunday that maybe spring is out there. But we do need the rain, of course, but with the change in, in the start of the day, daylight saving time and more activity, things popping up out of the NRC, we're now, as soon as spring break, we get past that, and then we're sprinting. There's a lot of stuff that happens the last 10 weeks of school, so just make you aware of that piece, and you know, I, I guess that's everything I had on the superintendent report and updates.
Thank you, Dr. Wong. Okay, so 3.3 integrated plan and budget presentation discussion, Dr. Wong.
Okay, if you were to visit our website right now, you'd find these documents posted on, on the dropdown under integrated planning. I think I have tried to keep the board informed of a, a process we've been involved in all year. If you were to talk to the Oregon Department of Ed, they would very proudly say they provided us a document of guidance early in the fall on how to do this whole process. But the reality is that they've still been building the airplane, even, they still don't have all the pieces done, but we have enough to get to this point. This integrated plan, and I'm gonna say this, get it in the record too, it's important for it to be in the record, is a new process. The state, I think the desire was to try to consolidate the number of different applications we had to do for grants. And the thinking was is, well, maybe you can leverage some of the things you have to do for each of them and do it for all of them, and I really like that idea. But the challenge is, is they made it pretty prescriptive and with a very short timeline, and so the, the they basically are asking us to identify some needs for our district based on input from students, parents, staff, partners. Anyone who walks by the school, they'll have, it's staying a little more, but, but the idea, what are the concerns, and in that we, I think we all have been concerned about some of the issues that, that students and their families have been facing in the aftermath of the pandemic and, and distance learning and all of that, and so I want to acknowledge before I go any further, that because we're a small school district and remotely located, the legislature did do one other thing too, they provided some additional funding for technical assistance for small districts. It doesn't mean we got the money, it meant that they set aside money so that ESTs in various areas could hire people who could, who were experts, experts could help us do this, so we have certainly been blessed to have Tanya Fries at Freezing Doll, Bruce Rhodes, and Jackie Jackhead as three of those technical advisors. Tanya Freezing Doll is, has helped us for several years, she is an ESP consultant. And she used to work at the Department of Ed, and so she understands how to help us translate what we're doing in terms of making it most acceptable in terms of what they're looking for, Bruce Rhodes is a retired administrator from the Tillamook School District. He helped us on previous grants. And he was helping us, and then suddenly the superintendent at Tillamook resigned, and he was superintendent for a month and a half up there in this year, and now he, he came back to help us finish this, so just a lot of wisdom and expertise and knowledge, and then Jackie Jackhead is also helping us with some issues around attendance strategies and things like that. They leveraged another resource, a person, Kim Young, who worked with So Ready and consulted with the ESD and a few other entities. And she's really good with numbers, so as we did surveys and, and various ways of gathering data, she was able to pull that together in a way that we can see trends that would help guide what you have in front of you, with the needs and all of that. And then, so we, we went with the surveys of parents, students, and staff, and we did intensive, more direct interviews with student groups. We reviewed the school board public comments for the last year to see if there was anything we could find out of there, there wasn't a lot, because there weren't a lot of comments, but we felt we needed at least look at that. Recalling that we had used information a year ago from our listening session, we had hoped to get that information before we had to finish this, that we still can integrate some of it in, I think it's gonna affirm kind of what we have. And then we did a training around Oregon Integrated Systems, which is where staff looks at various aspects of the organization and what's working, and at what level are we implementing supports for kids to give us sort of a, a measurement to help guide our investments. And then that then results in the stock for stock, which is a series of questions that you must answer for the grant. They ask that you look through a lens of equity, which, well, I'll tell you what that really means, is it means that you aren't overlooking any subpopulations of kids, poverty, special ed, maybe based on ethnicity or, or gender, you know, boys, girls versus girls favoring one or the other, or, or other ways that people might identify themselves, and because we're so small, we have a pretty good sense of what our student population is, but if you look at this document about page, it's a big checklist, it's on page 10. Who was engaged in any aspect of your planning processes and under this guidance? We went through and we did cross calculations to see how many of these categories we could check off based on knowing who participated. And we really, we didn't include the local workforce development or chamber of commerce, of course, and we didn't include tribal members, though we do have some Native American students who have Native American heritage, they, their tribal relationship is not clear, and we have no emerging bilingual students in our district right now, so those were, or their families, of course, but we use a variety of ways to engage people to help us get the information that would help us answer, describe the needs, and answer how we respond to it, now I made a little high-tech graphic on the board up here, I wanted to show you, because for all this work, it's like a puzzle, and it's very easy when you're doing a project like this to think that this is the picture. But in fact, we're talking about a subset of the grant funds we get, which are a subset of the money, revenue, and resources we have, so I drew this rather scientifically established pattern here that for funding our school enterprise, we get money from the state through the state school fund, that's our general fund, that's not what this is about. We also get funding through a variety of state and federal grants, and that's where these things fall, but they're not a big portion of that, they're just a subset of that, because we also get title funds and special ed funds and things like that. And then there's another category, which is called special revenue, which could be things like common school fund or forest fees, which are outside of this state school fund. So I wanted you to realize that, on the one hand, it feels like you did all this stuff and you set some goals, and are those, is that everything we're supposed to do? No, that's everything that we need to do, that we can fund out of these grants, and so when you get to see what we set as goals, and then what we set as spending priorities, it's because we're trying to make sure in the totality of all the resources we have, we can fund the whole enterprise, because there are a lot of things that would be fun to spend this money on, but if we don't take care of those core needs that even go beyond this funding, then we actually probably are hurting our organization, so that being said.
I have a question on that.
Please, yeah.
So so it sounds like that funding is there's some requirements you gotta do to get it. It sounds like those requirements are optional.
Actually, the.
Whether you want the money or not.
So this is the interesting piece, the state school fund is established by the state, and they, they set that amount, and their, their legislature is asking that over, whether it's 9.7 billion or 10.2 billion for the by name, and then they split it 49.1%. What they established four years ago was another fund, couple of funds, one was for high school success, that's one of the grants we're applying for. And the other one is for the Student Investment Act, which was a Student Success Act is what it was. And, and they kind of distributed those on the same formula, I wanna make sure it's not me, okay? They distributed it on the same formula that they do the, the state school fund. But it's not in that, but it's that they distribute it the same way, so it is, it is another pot of money that the state established, but the intent was to target certain things. So they said, we're gonna give you more money, but there's a limited number of things you need to focus on, and for the, the, the Student Investment Act, one of those things, for example, was increasing the number of kids who are on track to graduate by the end of ninth grade, that's a great measure, actually.
Right.
But, so, so your strategies have to kind of fit into one of the categories that they have, well, those are all things we're working on in the aggregate, but rather than spending money out of another pot of, of grant that, that we could use for other things we have to do, we have tried to focus in this grant application process, which is integrated, because it's for six different grants, of which we only participate, are eligible for two processes that help us paint the whole picture. So this, so this is weird, because that it is like, it acts like the state school fund, except it's outside of that, and so they limit what we can use it for. And if we can jump through the process and demonstrate that we fought and thoughtful with it, then we can. Then we can purchase certain types of things, which include personnel. So, so that, that, it was an excellent question, yeah, but I just want you to realize, I mean, you know, I think we're all, we probably have several hundreds of hours in this. But it's only a small part of the, the puzzle. It's work that last year and the year before, we did while working on the two grants separately. For a large district, there are actually six different initiatives that are included there, which is too small to qualify for the others.
Okay.
Okay, so, so what's gonna happen is, is, is this document actually, while it says. Uh, it says integrated plan application, at the bottom you can see, it says template, what I'm going to have to do. If you'll uh approve this tonight, is that I will then, before the end of the month. Go into a spreadsheet and I will copy each of these paragraphs into sections that have these questions. And then I have to attach some things, I have to attach some artifacts of our process. And, and um, and I have to attach what I'm gonna talk about in a minute, the budget piece. And then we submit that, and then they're gonna look over and say, did you follow all the rules as it line up, you can spin it on this, you can't. So I actually have included an additional list of items in case they say something we can't purchase. Because you, you need to either declare in this process now what you're gonna buy. Or if, if you do something, something later, it's not on, or you have to go through to a whole amendment process, which is like craziness, okay? And now the irony is this says for two thousand twenty-three through twenty-seven. But the budget is only for two years, and that's because the state is only, they only fund two years ahead, right? And then we're in the biennium now, so they're only gonna fund the first two years, so our budget is for the first two years. What we've been told, and they've kind of shown this the last two biennium, is that they will continue that funding stream and it will probably in- increase. But um it's not fair to make us plan four years out, that, to that specificity when they can't guarantee the money, so. So we will revisit, we'll probably have to do a revision next year, mid-year, but it won't be as intensive as this. And then in two years, I'm suspecting they'll have a process for us to go back and look at our goals, our, our outcomes. And make another budget for investments and, and make the case for why we're gonna continue what we're doing or why we could change it. So I threw a lot of information at you, but in a, in a nutshell, that's the summary of probably. Two hundred hours of work of different people to try to get to that. What I would take to you next is this thing called the uh summary of planning outcomes, strategies, activities and budget for twenty-three through twenty-five in the application budget. And what we legally are required to submit is probably the last. The, let's see, look, three. The last, um you first four pages, no, it's from here on, get submitted. The problem, and we're supposed to post this for the public to see, which we did, it's really hard to understand. So basically, I went back through and the previous three pages, I summarized. In this type of outline, what this is trying to tell you, we're.